Get started, uh, I stand with this, I'll call it, of an internet pledge to the flag as always. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I thank everybody for your attendance this evening and at this time, Mr. Barton, Superintendent, if you'd like to address the proud ones.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. I will, uh, I'll try to be brief, hopefully get out some good information to everyone this evening. And I'll apologize upfront, but I'll read some to you tonight, I hope that's okay. PowerPoint, and my eyes are getting all over sometimes, so I may have to, I may have to give a little closer. I apologize if I move around too much. But well, I appreciate it, everyone coming out tonight. My name is Steve Barton, for those who may not know, I think I know everyone here tonight, I'm the superintendent here. This are board members, I think everyone knows the board members, Mr. Pratt, Mr. King Pratt, Mr. Bill Johnson, Jeff Green, Ms. Charlotte Webb, J.J. Jones, and I appreciate them coming out tonight. Our buildings, I think as most of you know, are solid buildings. We had good schools, but they're old. Our buildings were built in the sixties for the most part. Our middle school was built in seventy-two, and it's recently, two thousand and seven, if you look, it's been renovated, so it's in fair condition. It's out there great there. We have some plumbing issues and things like that that still need attention. But our high school and elementary school are in desperate need of some renovations. This building, and this room we're in now, I know you look around at it, and it looks wonderful. Our maintenance and custodial staff and teachers and principals at our schools have done a great job of keeping the buildings up, but we need other renovations. Kitchens, roofs, and heating and air, and all those things are very expensive, and we'll get into that in just a few minutes. The reason you don't see the East End building, I know everyone that's here, the reason you don't see the East End buildings, we cannot spend any funding on the East End building. It's in flood plain, so that building, we'll be looking to take it off our books, and I won't speak to the board or get ahead of the board, but we'll be looking at options with that, and whether or not it can be sold, or what will be happening in the very near future. But we cannot spend building funds in any way that we're going to want. I'm gonna talk a minute about a district facilities plan, and I think sometimes, school people, we assume that the public knows all of this information. The district facilities plan was developed a couple of years ago, I'm sorry, a year and a half ago, when I first started. And what that plan is designed to do is to show the real need, based on a model program for elementary school, middle school, and high schools, public schools in the state, it's a model program. It's what the state says that all the children should have. Our unmet need, if we fix everything that needs to be done, is fifty million dollars. I know that's probably striking to a lot of people. Some of the things you're gonna see in that facilities plan, or if you get a copy of it, we're not gonna do. We won't have the money to do, if we pass this nickel, and other taxes, and do everything we can, we can't build central office, not gonna happen. We're not gonna build a bus garage, it's not gonna happen. But we can claim it as unmet need, okay? Remember that unmet need, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about it in just a few minutes, how important that is, that we have everything possible listed, okay? We need everything listed, and a central office and bus garage and things like that, that's part of that. But a district facilities plan was written, that was written with people like me, principals, teachers, secretaries, school community people, business community people. I think there was sixteen, sixteen different people, pants, I'm sorry, I love pants. And that's who worked to develop that plan, and they spent many evenings and working with me and some other people in developing that plan. Next is a little further breakdown, based on the need, remember the need that the state says we're allowed to claim, in that district facility plan. If you look, the elementary school shows an unmet need, a total of just over nine million dollars. Remember, this is, this was completed before any work started, okay? This was done before any work started. The high school shows an unmet need for a model program of twenty-five million dollars. The middle school, even being renovated, is showing an unmet need of over seven million dollars. And the central auditorium is showing a need of four million dollars. That's based on a model program, folks, that's not what we're gonna be able to do, we won't be close to that. If everything works together, we get this nickel passed, we get the matching from the state, that's gonna give us about another five point seven million. We're gonna have to do the most important things, that's what we're gonna have to do. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. Our bonding potential. I guess maybe the simplest way to look at this is it's like taking a loan for your home. It's like taking, most of us, I think, are familiar with a mortgage for your home. If we raise this tax, locally it's gonna produce a little over three million dollars. That's what our bonding agent is claiming that we will be able to produce based on previous tax years and what we've collected in the past. A little over three million dollars. The state match, and this is the important part of the nickel, this is the only way we get this part, the state will match eighty-nine dollars for every hundred dollars that we raise. They'll match eighty-nine dollars, so they'll match two point seven of the three million we would raise locally. Now, this is raised over a twenty-year period, that's not gonna happen, ultimately. We'll get the money, we can use the money upfront, just like us going to a bank and taking a loan for our house, we can use that right upfront and get started on these projects. And I urge you to understand that the nickel tax is the only way that we get that commitment from the state, and it will open up potentially other doors for us in the future. I think this slide is very important. This is a breakdown that shows some, just some example assessment on your homes, on real estate. Fifty thousand dollar home, this nickel tax will be approximately twenty-five dollars. And I say approximately, because if you've ever dealt with taxes, real estate taxes, it moves a little bit. It's based on collections, okay? It's based on collections. When we say it's gonna be a nickel, the state will require that you collect it. So if the tax rate of collection is ninety-six percent, we have to make up the four percent that's not collected. We are doing a very good job working the sheriff's department, our collection rates today are higher than in Miami. We were around ninety-five percent collection rate. Seventy-five thousand dollars assessment on a home, thirty-seven fifty. One hundred thousand dollars is a fifty dollar nickel tax is what it will cost, and one hundred fifty thousand dollars will equal about seventy-five dollars. Please remember, those are approximate, it could fluctuate a dollar or two, it could be a dollar or two difference. If you have any questions about that, I think that's very important, everybody understands that part. I know there's some information I've seen out that's a little off from that, I promise you that's very accurate, and I'd be happy to sit and do the math with anyone if you have questions about property you have, anybody, I'd be happy to do that. The reason that the nickel is very important, recently, the state has awarded funding to school districts that pass a recolable nickel and have substantial unmet need, okay? Earlier, we talked about that unmet need, that fifty million dollars. Here's why that's important. I don't know what the legislatures will do in the future. Couple of years ago, they put over a hundred million dollars in a fund that schools would become eligible for on a couple of criteria. One was your unmet need, if you had substantial unmet need, they ran us. The other is if you had the recolable nickel passed. We need those two things in place to be eligible if this other money comes available. Corbin, I don't know if you've been to Corbin lately, their facilities, pretty nice school facilities. They received recently, and I'm gonna say in the range, because I don't remember the numbers exactly, fourteen to eighteen million dollars in additional gift from the state because they had substantial unmet need and a recolable nickel tax passed, okay? So that's why those two items are important together. Here we just, we have a list of the things that we're gonna be considering doing, based on the amount of bonding potential that we have as a district. This is the elementary school list. New roof, as everyone can imagine, that will have to be done, we have to fix the infrastructure of our buildings. Internal space modifications, interior finishes, new plumbing restrooms, we're working on some of the restrooms now, some of the restrooms are being completed now. New HVAC, this is an important one to look at. I said a minute ago, with the nickel tax, we may have five point seven million dollars, correct? But that was a number. Our cost analysis right now for new heating and air conditioning for this building, one point seven to one point eight million dollars is what that I'm getting from our students. That's probably a striking number to a lot of people. When you think about your homes, it's nothing like that. Schools are very expensive. These are not numbers that I come up with, these are numbers that state offices publish. New electrical work in the buildings, upgrading electrical sprinkler system, renovations of cafeterias, our cafeteria's putting, I'm sorry, our kitchen was put in in sixty-four. As you can imagine, the equipment and the space is getting pretty old now, it's fifty years old, and those things need to be replaced. When this school was built, computers, I don't think they existed anywhere in the country. A need for computer labs, accessibility of electricals there. Address all the ADA accessibility items, that's the American Disabilities Act, making sure schools have proper accessibility. Window and door replacements, we've done some estimates, door replacements on this school and the high school range about half a million dollars for door and lock replacements. Those numbers were just astonishing to me as we started digging into this. Security vestibles, we know how important that is for our students. Our buildings need to be more secure, all of our buildings need to be more secure. And you can keep going down the list, pavement, addressing access to our buildings, if you've been behind this school in the mornings or in the afternoons, anybody in here been behind this school in the morning or afternoon? It's difficult, the traffic is difficult. Same thing you'll see in a minute, we talked about the other schools. The middle school would have the least need of our buildings. Still have some needs there that we're able to claim on unmet need. Probably some of the biggest issues we need to face there is some ADA regulations, some plumbing, possible plumbing issues that need to be addressed, and security issues to increase safety for our students. The high school, as you look down this list personally, both their new roof, during the snow last year, I see Mr. Bennett's here with us tonight, we had extensive leaks in the building, lots of damage. But right now, we're building the new roof, we're building new ceilings and lights in the high school, we're working on the HVAC, it will be completed soon, but there's still many other things, ADA accessibility, window and door replacement, security systems for the high school, security vestibles. Central auditorium, biggest need probably here would be the roof in our central auditorium. Depending on material you wanna use, and what we decide to use, as we go forward and can take input from as many people as we can, those estimates run from three to six hundred thousand dollars for a roof for the central art field. Again, I'm gonna talk about revenue, how this, how to come about and how to generate. Property evaluation of a hundred thousand, that's one, I think that's just an easy number to look at, on this nickel tax will cost fifty dollars per year, and remember it's contingent on inflation rate one hundred percent. I think this is important to know, motor vehicle tax will not change, I know that's been a concern in the community, it will not change, it will remain the same. Another important point here, this money that we collect on this tax can only be used for buildings, construction, renovation, debt service related to construction, that's all it can be used for. Ms. Wilder's here tonight, we'll have to place that money in separate budget, separate line items, and have to account for that that way, it's the only way it can be used. As I said earlier, this money can be bonded, and it will provide us initially, without the state match locally, we'll raise three million dollars, two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars a year, and with the state match, we'll collect an additional two hundred thousand dollars a year, which will give us that total of five point seven million dollars. And we can do some substantial renovations with that in our money, we can get our schools in really good condition, not great condition, we can be in really good condition. Our kids deserve it, our kids deserve it, and that's the things that kids have in other areas, other communities. I think everyone will agree with that. An example of tax rates with the nickel tax, it would increase our tax rate, we estimate fifty-six point three. If we, if the board did the four percent rate, that's not subject to recall, if the board raised four percent in three years, we would basically have a higher tax rate and no commitment from the state. We could collect the same rate and lose over two million dollars. I think that's important to understand. This is the best alternative for our future. As I said just a moment ago, more facts about the nickel, will not, cannot be used for salaries, cannot be used for raises, cannot create positions, will not be used for athletic fields. Will be used for items listed there, roof repair, HVAC, restroom renovations, improved security and safety, cafeteria and kitchen improvements, window and door replacements. Look at the windows and doors, single pane glass, you can imagine the energy issues there. Covered canopy spinach or buildings such as between the elementary school and the gym, or between the middle school and high school and the art field, and continue to work on our parking, and our access, and our pickups and drop-offs between students, parents, and the bus garage. And without this nickel tax, we are spending bonding money now, the bonding expense we have is about five point nine million. We will have potentially a million dollars left on this initial bond when we complete, if everything completes on budget and in schedule. Without this new tax, without this recolable nickel tax, we will have to pay the bond we're in now off before we'll have this type of funding available for our kids again. Twenty years, we'll be looking at twenty years before we're able to do this again. I truly believe it's one of the only options that we have, if not the only option we have, moving forward and taking care of what our students need. Here, I just provided you some pictures with some of the things we're working on now. I don't know if I can hold my hand steady enough, if you look around this top, see, see those, that light coming through, everyone see that? That's when we, this drop ceiling was taken out, that's just looking outside. That's just seeing straight through to the outside. So we're in the process now, spray foaming, all that, you can imagine what that's doing to our heating and air conditioning in our buildings, so we're taking care of that while we have that open. That's another just example, just down the hall, you can see that above the conduit in the building. Here's some renovation work going on with the library, you can see that it's quite a mess right now, and it's been, it's quite a change this week. I hope you have time to go by and look, but that's all the new ductwork that's going in, be above ceiling. So many of the things that are going on right now will be hard to see, but are necessary to get the infrastructure of our buildings ready, ready for our students. Cafeteria at the high school, again, you can see where all the new ductwork's going in, new heating cooling system, new lighting, and I should make sure everyone understands that we're doing that all across the district, LED lighting in all the schools, central auditorium. This allowed us to have some more bonding potential to create the things that we needed to do now, through a guaranteed energy savings plan, we worked with engineering firms, and this created a little over a million dollars for us to be able to do the amount of work we needed to do. Without that, we couldn't do this work in the name. They've been great to work with, through our new boilers and chillers and lighting, that will save enough money to pay part of this debt off. And if you want more information about that, I'd be happy to discuss that. Just a picture of the back of the high school, you can see some of the worn look of the school, and if you look, you see the rust coming down the walls in different places, that's from the old boiler system and the pop-off valves where it rains down the walls. The old metal windows, panels around the windows and the single pane lights. That's the area I was talking about, that really we should look into covering for our students traveling between the schools, getting to the art field. High school lobby, it's remarkable difference today, isn't it, remarkable difference. I hope you take time to drop out, see, new ceiling and lights, ductwork going in. That's the new boiler at the high school, and I found that picture very interesting because the old boilers, possibly the size of the stage, if you were ever in the buildings and saw that, and that's probably the size of a Coke machine or two, the difference, and the more efficient systems that we're gonna have in there. New chiller in back of the high school, it replaced in the same section where the older ones, that's a brand new chiller system. And that's the work going on right outside these doors, the restroom renovations going on in the back of the building here, the two restroom, four rooms serve the back end of the building. And that's, that's the final picture. I just wanted to say, I wanna make sure that I'm doing all I can for our kids. I care tremendously about what I do here every day, I care a lot about these kids, and I think it's that our kids deserve it for other kids around the region. Our tax rate is fifty point eight right now, currently the county system is fifty-six point four, I think, fifty-six point four. Pineball in the school, sixty-two point five. We have by far the lowest tax rate in the area. This will do tremendous things for our kids. I appreciate your time this evening, we're gonna stop a minute, and I'm gonna stop, I've talked for a very long time, and I'm gonna, those that have signed in, I'm gonna ask you to come up and share whatever information you want to tonight, and then we'll take questions at the end of that, if anyone has any further questions they'd like to ask. Thank you very much.
At this time on our agenda, would any of the board members like to say? And we'll have our citizens come up, I'll remind everyone to, according to our policies, to limit your comments to around three minutes, we won't, the police will set you down at exactly three minutes, but just kind of kick within reason, and our first gentleman to
Normally I wouldn't wear glasses, but that was like thirty years ago, so I'm getting ready. I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly about the nickel tax for Middlesbrough School System. First of all, I have no problem with those who want to question the new tax. Trillions of federal tax dollars are collected every year, and we are still in debt in the trillions. Our dollars go for a million things government decides to spend them on, and we often never see the results. The nickel tax is needed for school construction, and it will go where everyone can see it and its results every day. There are no hidden agendas for it, there are no secret government military projects that we spend on. Money must be spent a certain way, and it can only be used for certain things. It must be completely and professionally accounted for. Its use is open to the taxpayer scrutiny by state law. In May of nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five, Binghamtown School out on the Belt Line closed its doors for the final time. My fourth grade class was the last graduating class there. My fifth grade year was at East End School. East End was new, modern, and convenient, and for the very first time, the bus picked us up every morning and took us to school. I was ten years old in sixty-five. Binghamtown, I'm sorry, in sixty-five, East End, West End, and Middlesbrough High School, they were all built in the mid-sixties. They're no longer new and modern, like Chuck Owens, they are showing their age. When we pay taxes, we are investing. Some of that investment we may not like, but that is one of the consequences of living in our country. For me, there is no better investment than that of educating those kids whose parents have decided that the Middlesbrough Independent School District is the right place for their child to attend. They have invested enormous time, and energy, and sweat, and tears, and money in their children. Those parents' most important investment are their children. If that is so, and we know it is, we must reciprocate. We must attend the educational needs of our students to the very best of our abilities and our financial resources. This tax cannot make our schools new again, but the funds will transform them into a more comfortable, more efficient, and more inviting place for our students to attend and prosper. There are many people who live in Middlesbrough whose children have already graduated, and there are those who never had children to attend here at all. A new tax may seem especially unfair to them. However, I would ask you to think about what kind of person you want working in your community. Many of those who graduate from MHS will work here in all kinds of different occupations. They will fix your car, build your house, prepare your computer, serve your food, teach or be your nurse. One of the greatest honors in my life was when I was hired to teach at MHS. My heart is in Middlesbrough. With all its problems, negative publicity, naysayers, and poverty, I love it because it's home. I love all those kids who I've had the honor and pleasure of teaching at MHS, and that includes some of you and many of your own children. Finally, in the Middlesbrough Independent School District, and I'm proud of this, we take all students just as they are, rich or poor, dirty or clean, ready or not. If we can see beyond their selves and see their needs, their faces, and our responsibilities as adults to educate them and provide the best facilities possible, this issue should be an easy one to decide when the time comes. Thanks.
Next will be Mr. Ben Schlesser. Next would be Mr. Ben Slushman.
Good evening, Middlesbrough committee members, the school board, school leaders, and Mr. Martin. My name is Ben Slushman. I am a former student body president, member of the Yellow Jacket Football Team, Mr. MHS, and proud 2014 alumnus of Middlesbrough High School. I'm currently a student at Eastern Kentucky University, where I am studying nursing and a member of the United States Army Reserve Officer Training Corps. It has come to my attention that the school board is recently working on a nickel tax that would charge a nickel on every one hundred dollars on the value of property of each home in the city limits. I was very excited when I learned of this because the opportunity provides my alma mater and my community. However, I was very disappointed to learn that some members of the community are not supportive of the decision, or even certifying petition to have her appealed. In fact, I was more than disappointed. I was shocked. When members of a community have the opportunity to support their youth, it is their responsibility to do so. I am tired of the reputation our city has of being an aggressive community that has no desire to improve. The school district has been working hard to change that reputation over the past few years, improving academically to become one of the best schools in the region, and by next year, I fully believe one of the best schools in the state. Our school leaders have done this with subpar facilities. Imagine the improvement in our children's education if they had new classrooms and modern learning environments. If it wasn't for what I learned from the great teachers and role models at Middlesbrough High School, I would not have the habits and leadership qualities it takes to stand in front of you today and to one-day lead a platoon as a second lieutenant in the United States Army. We can debate round and round what we should do morally, but I'd like to talk today about what the tax actually costs. According to Citydata.com, the median house value in Middlesbrough is about seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. The nickel tax charges a nickel for every one hundred dollars of your home's property, and the average homeowner would pay roughly thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six, six, fifty-six cents a year, or about three dollars and twenty-one cents per month. That makes me wonder, how many of you drink at least one coffee a day? If you can cut back on one order of McDonald's coffee per month, then you have already more than paid for the tax increase. The future of our community and our school system is worth the cost of one coffee drink per month. Progressive businesses in our community do not allow their facilities to be outdated. Why should our children have to learn in outdated schools? Benjamin Franklin once said, "An investment in education pays the best interest." Investing in this nickel tax is going to pay huge interest for our community's future. In closing, I'd like to say thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate people who are interested in the community like myself. I love the region of Eastern Kentucky, and I love Middlesbrough. This issue is about more than a few extra dollars a month. It is helping to guarantee the survival of our school and our community. It is important we continue to empower our youth to achieve as I have. If we do not, I'm afraid that many other, our community will die like many others have in Eastern Kentucky. This summer, I had the privilege to work as a lifeguard in the Middlesbrough City Pool. I have met many children here interested in breaking the cycle of poverty, becoming doctors, teachers, politicians, preachers, and leaders. In fact, one day while lifeguarding for the Middlesbrough Independent Cop Care, an elementary schooler walked up and started a conversation with him. He said, even though he got picked on sometimes, he had a lot of ideas in his head, and if he just had the place and the support, he was gonna make them a reality. And he promised that if he did, he was going to change the world. I truly believe that with our help, this young boy will change the world. It is our responsibility now to give him the place and the facilities to do so. Thank you.
I think the next name is Trev Moore.
Terry Moore, sorry. Terry Moore.
I have a little busy hand, right?
I'm not the best.
You're not the best either. We're getting some care later. Hello, I'm Terry Moore. A lot of you guys know me. I've started on Sitebase over the years, and I'm here really to talk to you about my daughter and how this is gonna impact her. Most of you know my child has a hearing loss, and these canopies that we're talking about, some kids, they don't want to get their hair messed up on a wooden glass. My child don't want to have to carry an umbrella, which is frequent. It's kind of embarrassing. So to have these canopies is a really big thing. It's not, I'm sorry, but it's important. Being on Sitebase, I really, started in two thousand and seven, I really worked hard to get new faucets in this particular school. Imagine your child trying to push down the faucets. You all remember the old faucets you go into. Some of our facilities still have those. You got a first grader, they can't push down that faucet. It's not happening. So what I learned is that the kids wasn't washing their hands. How nasty is that? Because they can't turn on the water. Took a year and a half to finally get new faucets in this school here alone under the leadership at that time. We got some bathrooms changes for the teachers, which was way overdue. You like to go look at your teeth after lunch, and you can't even see yourself because the mirrors are so worn out, there's no reflection left. Little things that people take for granted every day in our own homes, we think that they should just automatically be here, but they're not. I can replace the doors in my house by going to Lowe's. We can't do that here. We have certain guidelines that we have to follow by state law. That cost of a doorknob could be three times the amount than what you could get at your house. That's why these numbers are so high. It's not because, it's not we're blowing it out of proportion. Mr. Martin has given you realistic numbers, and it's based upon where you're inhabiting this stuff. To do the playground equipment that was put in at the East End School, took thousands of dollars. It cost more to put that playground equipment in than it cost to buy it, all because we had a policy guidelines. To move it, same thing. We couldn't just take it down with community people who couldn't volunteer and go over on Saturday and move the playground equipment. Awesome, not happening, stayed on the ground. It's the same thing here. We can't make renovations without this nickel tax. And this nickel tax is our chance to get a matching fund to make it better for everybody, not just our kids, but our kids. Most of this stuff won't be done before Meredith graduates. She'll be gone. But does that not mean that it still isn't deserving for those that's coming in? It should be something we want to take pride in. We want to have pride back at our school. We've also given Meredith a choice sometime by to switch school systems. And my child said, "No, I want to stay in Middlesbrough. I want to graduate from Middlesbrough." This is a lot. We have a lot of people who put down our community, who want to leave, who want to go somewhere. It's my hope that my child does get to graduate from the school system. So I urge you to think outside the box. Not that you're thinking, "Oh, it's this money, and they can go out and get this done. I can do that at my house, it shouldn't cost that much." It's not that way. Educate yourself. I challenge you to look at the state side, see what's required, see what the insurance says we have to do, see what the policy says we have to do. It's not a district thing, it's a government thing. And so where our hands are tied, and we have to do something to make a difference. Pineville has had their nickel tax, the county has had their nickel tax, and they have a lot of improvements on their school system. Why not us? Why can't we have it? Why are we holding back? Did you mention about the building you mentioned earlier about East End? With all due respect, we're never gonna sell that building. It's a single-use building, and it's in a flood zone. So when that building was built, we didn't have to pay flood insurance, we didn't have all these new things that's now required. Who's gonna buy that building? Probably nobody. So the sad thing is, it's sitting out there, and we can't use it. It'd be great if we could sell it and get money and do all the, add it to the renovations we need, maybe do that bus maintenance shop and put the board up there. It'd be great to use some money for that, since we know it's not gonna happen. But what we do know is gonna happen is this, if you don't realize it, if we don't pass the nickel tax, we're gonna pay tax. And over the next twenty years, we're gonna probably pay up sixteen cents instead of five cents, because it's gonna take that much in order to match what the state is going to match us now. So either we can embrace what we're given, and we can take it and say, "Hey, great, we're gonna accept this, and we're gonna run with it," because it can be recalled. That sixteen cents, it will never be recalled. It will be there permanently. There is nothing we can do about it, citizens. So we have a voice now, we have a choice to take the nickel tax, support our school system, back our teachers, back our board, back our children, back our grandchildren, our neighbors' children. Stand up for those people who don't know how to stand up for themselves to make it better. I just, I really just hope that you encourage people in the community and that you tell everybody you know how important this is for us as citizens. This is our school. I don't want my child ever had to go to a county school because we couldn't keep up our schools. I mean, think about that. We have to look at the future, and if we don't take pride in our little city here, then we're doomed. Thank you all very much.
Superintendent Arden, members of the board, teachers, principals, community members, I think everything's been said that I wanted to say, and much better than I could have. But my name is Charlie Allen, and I want to just give a little bit of my point of view. Since everything else has been said, I will just point out that you only have to look around in the school to see the need. The need is definitely here. And I have been here only fourteen years, so paid taxes for all fourteen years, so right here at Middlesbrough. I understand that it will cause me to pay a little bit more, but I'm willing to invest that, and I think everyone in this community should understand what's been presented here, that from a banker's point of view, you know, if you can spend three million dollars and get two and a half million dollars, or two point seven million dollars, whatever it comes out to be, that's a good deal. I mean, anybody's gonna sign on the dotted line if they've got a mortgage that's gonna pay them back two point seven million for the three that they borrowed. It just, it just seems incredible that there could be opposition. And I thought, the reason I signed up was that I thought that there would be someone speaking in opposition. Don't think that anybody has so far, they've all been so positive that I can't even come up to their, their point of view. So I will leave it at that and urge the board to pass the nickel tax, do what we citizens elected you to do, and that's the best thing for our children and the future of our community. So thank you, and good night.
That is the end of our list of folks that have signed up, but we would like to, since this is an information meeting basically, does anyone have any questions or any comment they may have had and just didn't sign in?
I'd be happy to field any questions or thoughts, anyone I have, concerns. I would like to make a couple of comments before this goes on. And I can only speak for myself, I certainly can't speak for the board. But if we can, if we can get behind this as a community, I feel confident saying that as your superintendent, if we can get behind this tax, I will not, in the time I'm here, I will not come to the board and ask for another tax. I will not ask for another increase. This will be the only increase you'll hear from me in the time that I'm here, and I'll make you that promise. My salary has been questioned a lot in the news, I'm gonna bring that up. My salary, I make approximately seven thousand dollars less than superintendent did six years ago. I made approximately thirteen thousand dollars less than the state average. All of our salaries are posted online, if anyone ever wants to look that up, they're posted for probably the past fifteen years, if you want to know that or want to look that information up. When this board, when we all started working together, we had a district contingency of about forty-five thousand dollars. We now have a contingency of one million dollars, and I am extremely proud of the staff, board, everyone that's worked so hard in trying to save the money. Now, a lot of people might look, "That's all, you've got plenty of money, you've got a lot of money." I just want to give you one example of how it can go away quickly. The state mandated last year a one percent raise, and this year a two percent raise. And people deserve to make money, and they deserve to have raises. That raise in our tiny district will equate to approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. So that in itself, in four years' time, if we are not prudent in what we do, and we do not watch our funding, that raise will eat up the contingency that we have. So we have to be careful. I promise you, we're being careful. Anybody that knows me, and most of the people I'm sitting here with, knows if we do one thing, we'll watch the money, we'll do the best we can with the dollars that's in front of us. Also want to say that when several of us started together, I see some, my principals, all of my principals are out here tonight, so I want, I want to speak about their schools and their staff just tomorrow. A couple of years ago, our elementary schools in the bottom one percent in the state, they are now proficient schools. I'm very proud of that. I am proud of the staff and the principal of this building and all the work they've done. Our middle school, Mr. Jones is making great changes, we expect great things from middle school, new programming going on there. We're very excited about his future. And Mr. Bennett, principal at our high school, his staff, we now have the only proficient high school in this county, and I'm very proud of that. I hope you'll continue to support our principals and our staff and this board, because they make difficult decisions every day. None of us want to pay more taxes. I promise you, anybody sitting up here with me tonight, they don't want to pay more taxes. I don't like paying myself, but I feel it's my responsibility. I've been here twenty-six years now, and I've always tried to do one thing, I'll try to take care of my kids. And these are all my kids, and that's what I'm here to do, and I'm gonna take care of them. I hope we all agree on that. I hope we can do what's best for our children. I appreciate you very much coming out tonight. Board members. Other comments I hope you make? Thank you all, I appreciate it.
On behalf of the board this time, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank everyone for their attendance tonight, and as Mr. Martin said, I believe, well, he decided to encourage you to go out into communities. There's a lot of misinformation that's floating around that's just, that's just not active. I would encourage any of you, if you want more detailed information than what we were able to provide to you this evening, feel free to go by the central office. I'm certain Mr. Martin or anyone down there will be happy to answer your questions. I'll be happy to answer them to the best of my abilities, and I'm sure any of those board members would as well. And I've been privileged to sit with this board for one and a third, going into my course here now, I think, but, and I can assure you, the decisions that we make are with our children's best interest in mind, regardless of what they are. But I thank you for your attendance tonight, and if no one else has anything, then I'll bow for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I will. Thank you all very much. Thank you.